Ready to start. Call me to order and you'll be called.
Peggy, we have Ken.
Yes, Luther.
Yeah.
Ralph?
Here.
Council seat candidates have been brought up first. We know that Aaron Kobach was one of them. I got this in my mail. I think everybody else got one. Did you get one of these from Lisa Shiden? Was there a letter in your bag? What's that?
Yeah.
Was there a letter in your box?
Yes, I got one.
Okay. So that's two candidates for appointment. Are there others? Did anyone talk to Michael Mash?
I did. He said he was interested in trying to talk to him, but I haven't had any conversation with him since last month. And I had assumed he would be here tonight if he still had it.
Did we invite him tonight? It's odds of Mary Jane not being here because I know she is going to take care of a couple of things and I don't know if they got done, but...
I did invite him last month's meeting and he didn't come for various reasons. The things that we tabled at this point, my knowledge, has been on the back of...
Since then. Okay. Give him a second to look at their letter. Chair will entertain a motion to appoint someone to fill the empty council seat.
I'd like to nominate Aaron Kobach for the nominations concerned.
Pardon me?
Who?
Aaron Kobach. I'll second that.
Are there other nominations?
We have a letter here about...
Yes, I know. Let me just... And I think... Is that you back there, Lisa? Lisa's here this evening. No other nominations to fill the council seat? I'd like to nominate Lisa. Can you? You can, yes. Is there a second to that?
I'm going to second.
That's fine. You don't have to if you don't want to. Lacking a second, the nominations are closed and Aaron Kobach has been nominated to fill the empty seat. We call Gold, please.
Peggy?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
All right. We won't let Aaron know. And Lisa, I'm glad to know you're interested and these things come up obviously periodically here, so we're going to keep your letter on file and check with you first if another seat comes open.
All right, thanks.
So we can fill that seat. Chair will entertain a motion. First, has everyone had a chance to look at the main minutes? Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes?
Are you talking about the one she just gave us? Well, no.
She just gave us a corrected first page.
It's corrected first page. The date said April on it.
Yeah.
Everything else is the same.
All right.
I make a motion to accept the main meeting.
I'll second that. Peggy?
Oh, you go second. You're doing the motion, the...
To accept the minutes, yes.
No, I don't. I think I see a problem.
Could you please tell us? I mean, I asked for additions or corrections. Can you tell me what the correction should be?
Okay, yes. On the Board of Public Affairs, it says Chris, Alan, and Ed. Was Alan here? No, he wasn't.
So it should be Norm. That should say Norm.
Okay. That's one, that's what I...
That's what she said. Are there any other corrections or additions?
Now, why does it... Why did she give us this?
It said April. The date had not been changed.
Got you.
So that's been corrected.
That's right.
Now, do you want to make a motion to approve as corrected?
I make a motion to approve the corrected minutes of the main meeting, please.
And I'll second them as corrected.
Peggy? Yes. Luther?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the warrants against your old time sheets? Is there a second?
Clear.
Peggy? Yes. Luther?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the interest transfer to the respective funds.
Motion made.
Second. Peggy? Yes. Luther?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the operating transfer, the operating fund transfer, from the general fund to the police fund.
Motion made.
Second.
Ken? Yes. Peggy? Yes. Luther?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve moving grant matching funds from the general fund to the street department fund?
So...
Second.
Peggy? Yes. Luther?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Allen's away and Susan is not here, so John, you want to come up?
Hey, I've been here before. My name's John Rand. I have the street in the borough of Ohio. Got a copy here. Matrix record, 04, 12. Got a lot of weed problems down here. Exaggerative requirements. You only read the whole thing here.
I think we're all pretty familiar with them. We're having it redone as we speak. It's being worked on.
Why aren't we doing anything about it now?
Why aren't we doing anything about it?
Yeah.
Because this is cumbersome and takes forever to get something to the courts. It has to go there. I mean, we are working on things and we've had mode, we've had bond mode already this year, haven't we? Haven't we?
Several of them.
Worked on that. I know there are more. I've seen them.
Yeah, we have an issue with a lot of Indiana cars over here and these fire plates. And I wonder why some ain't got about that.
I'm questioning Indiana cars of people living over here.
Yes.
Have you been...
And I got it from Texas and I got it from Atlanta for Georgia. And you're around town, used to see them.
Me?
No. Jerry.
I live on the state line. It's kind of, you're going to have cars coming from Indiana.
No, no, each are here. Every one of them, Jerry, and there are many here.
There's cars all the way.
Yes.
Three or forty-seven.
Been on rural street for two years and never noticed that, these fire plates?
Unless they're driving.
You didn't notice six fire plates?
Unless they're driving. There's not much I could do with them just being expired.
It's not supposed to sit on the street. He was in one in Texas, been here three months. That's right across from Methodist Church. Not the vegetable one down at France Park.
France Park is a private property. I can't...
Got to spend a lot of time down there.
I can't, I can't enforce anything back there in the trailer park. It's a fourth degree misdemeanor. So many traffic violations, other parking stop signs and stuff like that can't be enforced there.
And you can't enforce the golf carts running around town either.
Well, golf carts is...
Oh, all kinds of.
Well, they fall under our ordinance for the golf carts and they happen to stop. There's been a handful of them stopped this year alone. It's been informed that they have to have them inspected and put on.
How about on the sidewalk down there?
Well, they're not supposed to be driven on the sidewalk. But at the same time, the village is over about one square mile. There's over seventeen, well, actually quite a bit of streets in town. There's usually one off at home and you can't be everywhere at the same time.
How about like a chain or something else where they can't get on the sidewalk?
Can't do that. That's all trouble.
You couldn't walk on it.
That's all probably... Cars off. I saw a bunch of them once this past week.
There's signs on that sidewalk if you're referring to the one down by France Park that says, "Call carts." It's just like any other law or any other sign that's out there. If they don't want to hear it, they're going to do whatever they want to do. And if you're not sitting there when they do it, you can't enforce it. Just because you see it doesn't mean the officer sees it. There's a lot of things going on in town that I see that I have no right to do anything with because I'm an unarrested officer, but I see people break the law all the time.
Well, I had a problem with a pothole and I talked to a council member about it a month ago. Nothing got done about it. I started a pothole, a crater on my street.
I went up down that street and that street wasn't near as bad as Terry Street.
After it was done.
Oh, after.
It's still got about six holes on it.
There's several holes in this village that need to be addressed and we're addressing them as fast as we can get it, as much money as we can, coming in to do it better.
I mean, I paid fifteen dollars extra for my plates for the last twenty-two years.
You know how far that fifteen dollars go, we told you?
Number two. You're right. You're right.
Oh, really? About what you spend seventy-five dollars a ton of white dog.
Well, you got seventy-five carts sitting around here that don't belong here.
That's not up to me or you to enforce that.
But I think we could take a look at that.
Yeah.
I mean, we can watch.
I said my own personal...
I can hit over at that.
And I do have to agree with you. If their licenses expire, they are not supposed to be on the street.
There's one sitting on that street, car, they've been fined a hundred times and just be riding and driving.
It's not moving on the street.
No, it's parked on the street and if the plates are expired, it should be hauled in.
Well, it shouldn't be here with expired plates.
It's got expired plates and it should not be on the street.
We can take a look at this thing.
I have the state hall.
And I think if people keep driving on the sidewalk down there in their golf cart, eventually they're going to get caught.
I saw a lot of them.
Well, a lot of them this weekend is not much of a surprise, really. All these weekends will have to be, you know, I don't know, a little bit more signage, but the sign's pretty clear and pretty simple. It's just people don't pay any attention and they'll get caught eventually. I think they will.
Like I said, I seen a bunch of them this weekend. I sat and watched them. And it was ridiculous. They'd be rocking them down the sidewalk and they have no S in the middle of that condition. Golf carts anywhere. They don't have plates, they're turned second.
We are stopping those people and I mean, probably giving them a warning to do that. If we catch them again, then they're going to be ticketed. We're trying to do the best we can.
Now, I'm always keeping the camera out. Coming back.
Appreciate your assistance. Thank you, John. Susan?
Hello, how are you? Aren't we doing too late? I had a...
Well, that was fine. It was fine. She just went ahead and let John go.
That's wonderful. Thank you. I'm like, hey, just wanted to update you on a few things. One, the water line plans are moving along very well. Field work's done. I anticipate that there is a possibility we'll be ready to put it out for bids before your next meeting. So I would like authorization from the council to bid the project as soon as we're ready to go so we can kind of keep that moving and have enough time to get that put in this fall before the winter business and so that you can get a base next year. Also, Cherry Street, just to let you know, we're continuing to work on that. I hope to have it ready to bid by August. So we're continuing to do all these cherry. I do have the contract for the Spring Street Bridge with me this evening. And then I also brought you a schedule, ODOT schedule, of the way this project will work. And there is a feasibility study that has to be submitted by August the first, just part of our contract. And then the actual construction will take place. It's kind of a...
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, and it's like you're stuck down here and then you go here. The actual construction will begin in September of 2020 and go to 2021. Now, it's not going to take you a year to replace that bridge even though they have it here in there. And I can tell you that a schedule that far out, if they are going to be making changes, they will.
They will change as we go.
And soon we can get stuff into them, you know, that may speed that up as well. Although I don't know that we want to speed it up too.
Not too much.
I'm not too much of the funding piece of a portion that we guys will have to put in.
We don't want to shoot it up too much.
All right. So, you know, as long as it's still drivable and I don't know that it's like necessarily any worse, or, you know, we'll just kind of keep a ODOT schedule.
Cost management, I think, is a big, big problem.
It is. And if everybody kind of stays on the west side instead of the east side, you know, if it gets to a point where we need to put some cones out there to keep people calm on the west side with the new... So basically that contract is in accordance with the way that the grant was written. The first part's just our typical language and then we kind of get to, turn page there. That kind of goes into the actual Spring Street Bridge. We'll be replacing the existing bridge structure with a pre-stressed, three-sided arch or flat-topped box culvert. And we will basically be widening it to 28 feet wide, so it'll be a little wider through there and it'll facilitate the cars through there a little bit better. The entire project length will be approximately 300 feet from, you know, where we stopped paving on each side, approximately 150 feet altogether as far as the bridge piece is concerned. But then there'll be some additional 75 feet on each side that will take in extra paving to be able to wind it back in as far as being able to go over with the bridge deck. Our contract includes the ODOT funding work that you've already put forward, the field work. There will be two stages of plans submitted. ODOT typically has a three-stage, the middle one to three. This particular project is just doing a two and a three. We have a feasibility study that's due August the first. And then the first set of plans, the stage two plans, are due to them March 1st of 2019. The stage three plans are due August 1st of 2019. And then we have to have all the final tracings to them by the end of 2019. So we'll also be looking at the right-of-way down there and what kind of right-of-way you have. We'll do all the courthouse research as far as that goes and then lay that out to determine exactly what right-of-way you have, if we need to obtain some right-of-way or some temporary construction easements. We'll do that on your behalf to make sure that you have adequate room to be able to replace the bridge within property that you own or have rights to be on. The project also includes, and the cost includes $2,500. That's related to the environmental review that you have to do and that has to do with some things that the village has to provide to ODOT. They'll actually do the environmental review record, but you have to provide letters, you have to provide some maps, you have to have a public meeting. So there's some things there that will help facilitate for you, for them to be able to do the environmental... The total cost of the contract is $49,400. That's the same amount that was in the grant application that we submitted, that we submitted to do the higher municipal grant. The other thing that I had to talk to you about this evening, I just wanted to bring your attention that, and I know some of you are new, so I'll take a step back a little bit, but the village has always participated in a program called the Ohio Public Works Commission. An interesting grant program that's available through the state of Ohio. Most recently, we got money for East Cherry Street. And as you know, maybe, East Cherry Street is going to be reconstructed from Washington Street out to where the water plant is. The portion from Washington Street to Spring Street is actually being funded by an Ohio Public Works Commission grant for approximately $253,000, more or less. And then the other portion is being funded through a DIPR grant that we got through the Community Development Block Grant Program, which goes through the purple county. So the piece that is being funded through Ohio Public Works Commission, that particular program has a three-year pipeline, which means anything that's submitted in this year, which will begin in the fall, will not be funded until 2021. So you always have to be thinking ahead because if there's projects out there that you want to do, you can't just put them in and expect to get them the next year because of this pipeline. And it kind of forces communities, and all the communities in the purple county are under this umbrella, to kind of plan ahead and be thinking about what, you know, is important in your community and what projects are out there, streets or sidewalks or short green or bridges or whatever those things might be that you, you know, need to, you know, pay attention to, so to speak. So I guess I just wanted to bring your attention that the water line on South Washington Street, we had submitted that into the Ohio Public Works Commission program last year. So being that we're going to be doing that with different funding, you now have nothing in the pipeline. So I guess I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that if you did want to submit something this year so that it would go into the pipeline, you know, one, you wouldn't receive the money until July 1st of 2021. You wouldn't have to do your project until 2022. And that seems like a really long way away, but in the funding world, it's not. And you have to always be kind of thinking ahead. That's just kind of the way it works. So I wanted to bring it to your attention this evening because those applications are typically new sometime the end of July or the first week of August. So you will probably only have one more meeting before those applications would be due to decide if you want to submit something. If you submit something, let's just say, and it's in the pipeline for three years and somewhere in there you decide, oh gee, I really, we really need to wait an extra year. We just don't have the money, then we can't save up the money that we need or whatever, you can always pull it back. Occasionally, you can jump it up if there's something critical that happens, but typically that's hard to do because there's enough other projects in there that they're not really going to let you bump somebody else that's been in the pipeline unless you have some type of an emergency situation, just like you wouldn't want somebody bumping you if it's board here. You know, you don't want somebody to come along and bump you. So they typically don't do too much bumping up unless maybe there's some additional funds and they didn't have enough applications that year. But you can always pull it back if for some reason you feel like you're not ready for one reason or another. And I have communities that do that, you know, all the time if they put something in and maybe something else comes up and they're like, ew, this project's making more importance. So let's put that in and we'll pull the other one back. But you can at least kind of have your name in the pipeline if that's what you want to do. So I guess I just wanted to bring that to your attention simply because, you know, we're not going to have one more meeting before that. And I wanted to just kind of maybe kick around if you guys had some ideas, if you, you know, still have your tenure plan. I don't know that, I don't know if you even have that anymore.
I don't, I've not ever seen it.
Yeah. Well, I remember when Neil Hoffman was in there. That's all getting there.
No.
It was created then, and I think we've done everything that's on there because Washington Street was on there, Cherry Street was on there, you know, part of Main Street was on there. So I guess I just wanted to, you know, talk to you about that and see if you have any thoughts about, you know, something that you want to do. We've used it for water, water lines and water plant. I've used it for credits to your wastewater plant before. So I mean, it can be used for any type of infrastructure within your community. They like to see replacement. If it's replacement, they'll do up to a 90% grant. Typically, we do about 75 because you can't really score well enough at 90%. If you're doing something new, example, you want to extend a water sewer line outside of your corporation limits or something like that and it's new infrastructure, they'll take 50% and you have to come up with 50%. So I don't know if you've kind of thought about that or if you have a committee that you'd like to move one.
I'd like them to, yeah. I think you can move the street committee and sanitation committee. It would be nice to finish Main Street.
Yeah, that was on the agenda.
That was part of the... I didn't know that that was something we wanted to do.
We did, and then Heights, shady link project.
That and Lincoln. We did Lincoln and that instead.
So that we can do a complete street on that deal.
We're going to have two streets. We did because we want to look at Main with that.
If you pull back on that, or does that put us in line? Does that make it that as far as track three to six years or just another year behind?
No, let's just say, let's say you get in, let's say you submit it this year and then next time they're like, you, you know, please let me go on and, you know, we go on another year. And then it's like your year, but you're not really ready. And you can just say, well, we just want to stay back here at year number two. We don't want to be in year number one, you know, to be funded just yet because we're not ready. So we just want to stay in year number two. And you can, you know, and then if something comes along and you are ready, then you can just let yourself jump into year number one. And a lot of times with some communities, depending on how critical a project is or isn't, there's been times where there's like a whole lot of projects in one year and not so many in the next year. And so because of that, maybe it didn't score really well because of the type of project maybe it was, we've pulled it back to put it in a year where there weren't as many applications because the competition's not as, not as, you know, sick, so to speak. So I mean, you know, there's some, there's some leeway and flexibility once you get in there, but you can't really speed yourself up if you're not in it. So I guess that's kind of what I wanted to talk about just because, you know, if we want to submit something, you're going to need to press a resolution at your meeting this month and then we can get it submitted and, you know, then we can just kind of let it play out and then next year, you know, you can resubmit. We can decide what, you know, if there's something more important, you know, but it's just kind of a matter of thinking about.
Thank God. It would be nice if somebody from sanitation, somebody from street could need with Susan and I sometime, if we can all arrange that and head together just to, in the meantime, take a look and rack your brain on what we really need to accomplish.
Well, like I said, BPA.
I know there's been some comments about the wastewater plant. I know there's also some comments about, I said, the bridge on High Street.
That is another...
I think High Street Bridge is part of...
That other street, the one the gentleman was just talking about a while ago, that needs to be addressed too.
Well, I know the engineer's office was down and did their bridge inspections and they talked to Jimmy about, the High Street one?
Yes, it was.
Okay, the High Street one. And I know Jimmy talked to me about it on the phone. And so anyway, that's something else that's just kind of out there that you might want to consider.
Is that Mike Yipkis? Wait, it's a car.
Because you can't do bridges, you know, and we can, we can, depending on how the, they submit those inspections to the Ohio Department of Transportation. And then the Ohio Department of Transportation has like a database of all the bridges in the state of Ohio. And when those go in there, then every year when they have this Ohio Municipal Bridge Grant, like what we got for Spring Street, they basically take out the bridges that have the worst ratings and they show up on this list every year. And so that's kind of how Spring Street was. Spring Street showed up on the list. And so if you applied for mine for Spring Street and because it was on that list, you got like special consideration. So if the High Street Bridge would happen to show up on this list, you know, that might be an odd two. The bad thing is, you know, one, right now it's only a 5% map plus the engineering, you know, whether it stays that way, no, no. So that would be something we just have to consider. But even if you click a bridge into Ohio Public Works Commission, something came along, you went after the Ohio Municipal Bridge, that's okay. Just pull it out and start everything with something else. It's not, you know, there's no penalty.
No.
You know, once a county decides to give bridges back to the building, a cut with rich area, they...
I've got a brat down there and they have a bridge and they basically just closed the road. There's like two people that live on it and they said, we can't afford to...
We can't.
We can't afford to replace the bridge. There's like two people that live on this road. So they just closed the road and one person comes in from this way, one person comes in from this way, and that's what they did.
Yeah.
You know, they just, it was an alley choice. So it's difficult. You're right.
So...
So anyway, those are the things I need. They need authorization to bid. You have the contract and then kind of need to decide, not necessarily decide something, but decide if you think you want to consider moving forward with something through the Ohio Public Works Commission.
I don't think we might know, but I think we probably would be stilling not to put something in.
I think it'd be a waste not to get something in there before them.
We need to approve the bidding, authorize the, authorize the bidding with the water line.
Make that motion.
Peggy? Yes. Luther?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
You all right? You okay, Luther? [laughing]
I talked too long, because we're at the turn.
And now that we have a price, even though we already have this price in a, in a, yeah, in something that we were looking at, we do need to approve the signing of the engineering agreement for the South Spring Street Bridge.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Yes, Luther?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
And if we, we have to get it signed before the scope.
And get back there. And then I'll send the original to you.
Go inside and witness.
Yes.
Oh, I guess we need to witness that.
Thank you very much. And then if you have a bigger time.
And you tell us when you can.
Well, it's not really up to you guys, I mean, you kind of probably have more people involved, you know, than I do. I mean, it'd be easier to do it in the evening because of, you know, your council and your board members. I'd be more happy to come down in the evening, in the evening if you'd like. I know I'll be down here next Monday evening because I have to be at the Jefferson Township meeting at seven, if you want to do something at seven first.
Will you be coming up?
I can come in there.
I had a meeting that night too, but I couldn't.
You do? What time is that?
We gave you.
Same time.
I'll be field meeting that night.
Should be next Monday night, yeah, should be.
We could, I could do six.
We work out real good.
If we did it at six o'clock, would you be okay?
I could be here six, that'd be fine, because then I want to be down until seven, and then if I get there a little late, I don't know.
And we'll just be a part of your meeting, if that's all right.
Sounds, sounds really doggone.
Yeah. I won't be up too much, I won't break anything.
That, we'll just say six o'clock next Monday, and we'll find out if Peggy wants to come to sanitation or who does, and, and, well, they couldn't, I suppose, go to me there, but.
Just let me know on all schedule at first, if something happens, I'll be able to call me, or if you get ahold of me, and we can switch it to something else, but I'll plan on that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sutton is not here, and we weren't sure if he's coming or not, so we couldn't lock him or shut him. Committee reports, safety.
Please far handle 109 call service, 621 reports, three res, four citations issued, 321. Going to the mental guidance report I left for today, I received a reservation letter for Officer Brooks today.
He's a part-time person, we just hired him not too long ago. He's very good, and we kind of figured we wouldn't be able to hold on to him for a long time, that's part-time, so we are looking, start looking, yeah, for somebody that's going a few hours a month. Thank you, Mary. Building. I don't know, Daddy.
I think it is.
I'm looking here.
Because the only thing that I did was, I drive around and look at the buildings and make sure everything looks right, you know what I mean?
No, nothing's fallen down then?
I haven't seen anything collapse.
Okay.
And, um, it looked good to me.
Okay. You know, usually if somebody has a problem with their building, they're going to come to you and talk to you about it, but yes, doesn't hurt anything, keep an eye on it.
Yeah, everything looked good to me.
Thank you. Streets.
And there were still conflict problems, do what we can to never end in battle.
Yes, it is. What are we, do we do have some places scheduled, is that correct, or that we like to schedule, or that we need to vote on to spend the money to do? Are those, is that correct, or am I just?
Well, we got some places we're, we're looking at doing, but we're trying to come up with it. The money first, if you get that paper. Because we've got another repair work to do, seeing as how if they're not going to start on Cherry Street as quickly as I thought they were going to.
Yeah, I just have stuff, yeah, so maybe, but, anyway, you know, we do have.
We may end up having to lose some money from the general, the street department, do some repair work.
I, I have some questions for the council, because I'm, like I say, I'm still learning a lot about a lot of this stuff, but I've had three people come to me in the past week, and they want to know why they're not allowed to have chickens.
Can you wait till we get to that?
Oh, I thought we were still on letting people talk.
We're doing committee reports right now.
Oh, okay, I can wait.
It's all right, Luther, if you would just wait when we get down here to new business.
I got a couple, so I can wait, yeah.
I'm going to put, until you land in, and we'll bring that up then. Okay, so that's the streets lights, anything to report?
Yes. I checked them last night, I couldn't find anything from Commandant, has anybody called you about anything?
No.
Okay. Thanks, Peggy. Finance, don't have anything from the.
Have we notified the Washington Board that we want to, or set paperwork?
No.
Well, it probably would be reasonable to get it, about, bring it along the ballot in the fall, November. And nothing else? Sanitation?
Yes, sanitation. The people on 207 North High are in progress of cleaning up 144 North Ward, Chayton Street, on the garage that's down, got it down, they don't have it all cleaned up yet. 136 and a half, North Ward, is in the court, Water Street, Matt Helms is cleaning up that place there, I haven't got it all done, but he's been working on it. Okay, and hit, the 400 Rent Avenue, 47 East Cherry, that's in progress for the taxes. 106 West Main is, has had to be done something about that, and that's all I've got right now.
What about mowed? Do you know anything about these places that have been mowed, or the others that need to be mowed?
I've got, I've got 106 West Wallon Street has just had been mowed. Do you know of any that need to be mowed?
There's a place on Rent Street that hasn't been mowed yet this year, that probably, either we need to ask them to get it done?
What, 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 what number is that?
I don't know, but it's pretty obvious, it's on the north side of the street, and it's not, you'll know it when you see it.
Bill Pevers.
It was, yes. And I have not been around everywhere, but I did, I go by that all the time, so that might be somebody who wanted.
I'll talk to her about it, yes.
Thank you. Now, I also put a thing in your box and in Mary Jane's box about chip funding, community housing impact and preservation for some of these places. You know, she thought that maybe 144 North Washington could use it. I don't know if they could or not, but that's, there's $400,000 being distributed, there's 800, a lot for it, for the county, even gets half. And the rest of it can be claimed in the county. There are family size limitations, maximum income levels, they're all listed here, and along with those things, you've all got a copy of this, so if you know anyone who would, would like to apply for this, the sooner the better.
Now, that goes under the sanitation?
I guess it does, it does. I mean, it, I mean, outdoor things, you know, that people need to, and it can, you know, anybody that needs some help getting their house fixed, and that in the lower income levels, they have to meet those requirements, but it would be a good thing to have, I think. All right. Park, park is not on our agenda, but I, and it's just an oversight, so we're going to talk about the park for a minute, and what's been going on up the park.
We, we were donated several hundred dollars, I believe, after the car show.
Peggy, how much donation did we get?
2,000.
Almost 2,000.
2,400, 2,495, it's written in the balance sheet.
Was a real good success for the car show, and what Wanda Melo did to get money into the park fund. And I believe that the sorority has donated some money also.
Well, the sorority has donated, they're looking at, at your portable toilets for summer and that program, and I didn't know where it was, but I did ask them if they would be interested, and they've donated 175 dollars toward paying for that. If you decide that you don't wish to do that, I'm sure that we can reroute their money to something else, but I knew that was something that.
Well, if we, as far as I'm concerned, if we can still get the handicap accessible portable potties at the 118 dollars that Rupke originally quoted us for, I would like to use that money to put two units up there at the school, one in each shelter area, and utilize the money that we've been donated, at least for this.
But remember, we contacted Rupke and 118 dollars was not correct.
Well, you know what? We've got it right here in writing.
They redid that.
So, has anybody looked into it yet?
No, because I was going to bring it up to council before we went forward with it to be sure that's what it was, but Maggie had told me that there was a difference in the money, and then you had told me there was 118 was what we had quoted.
Well, I've got it right here in writing, and I've got the lady's name who gave it, and it was her supervisor who made the concession, so I would think if you, you've got this, don't you? Right here.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think if we can talk to them and see.
Well, I'd like to have council approval if we could, at the price of 118 for each one.
I, I'd like to know, if I'm on the Parks Committee with you, I don't know any of this stuff.
Well, this, this stuff just doesn't my attention this.
I just, here, right here.
I haven't got to sue you yet, is it?
Okay, well, I'm sitting here listening, you know, I'm going to be honest with you, I feel like a dummy sitting over here, and I don't know what the hell's going on.
I don't want you to feel that way.
It's just the timetable, if there's.
In fact, this one's a little bit better because it, it's got some extra things at the beginning, but it might be a little easier to read. She's starting with the quote down here, starts at the bottom of this page, but there's the quoting price, and she went to a supervisor of hers, and that's what they gave her. So, give that to us, we're all, so.
Well, I would, I would think that that might be our step to utilize the money, especially that the sorority kind of suggested that's where they'd like their money to go. And when I talked to Wanda, she didn't have a specific thing in mind to do with the money, she was just bringing the money and letting us do as we needed to. But with the time being here for people to use those shelters.
I don't think you want to weigh too much.
I would like to see it done as quickly as I could, if, if we had that, you know, we can get it for that 118, if we go over that, then we're going to have to step back and decide whether we want to spend more or not.
Well, do you want to make a motion contingent on the price of 118, what is it, 118.20 or something like that?
118.20.
Yeah, 118 dollars point cents.
The thing though is, if, if we don't get it right away at that price, we're another 30 days or more away before we get one put in, so we're looking at July halfway through the season.
You can do two of them for, for 118.20, or you can say if it's 175, which is the latest quote we had, from a different person now, wasn't this Katie Brown, remember this place, and just have one.
Okay, then my, my offer would be, if we can get 118.20, we'll do two, if we have to go to the 175, we'll just get one.
Is that a motion?
That would be a motion.
There's a motion to, are we talking about a handicap?
A handicap accessible portable pot.
There's a motion to.
And Rupke will maintain that all of it.
Yeah, they will.
Whether it's one or two, the way I understand.
Yes, part of the rental, I think. The motion is to put two portable toilets at the park for the summer, get them from Rupke, if we can get them for the quoted price of 118.20 a month, or one at the tennis court shelter in that vicinity, if we have to pay the 175. And as Ralph said, both those quotes include the maintenance of the weekly cleanings.
How many months are we talking about?
Till October of this, I would say till the end of September after the Apple Fest is over.
How many, how many parterners are they going to have for the Apple Fest?
Now, that I don't know.
They'll have to get the extra ones that came with.
They do that themselves.
I understand that. If we have that, we don't need, if we don't feed ours, if, if we don't need buy, pay for something, if they're going to have a.
That is true, but one more, I don't know that they bring in that handicap, that set of two units for the Apple Fest.
Kenneth, the Apple Fest at the end of the month, we need it from the beginning of September until the Apple Fest.
I understand that, I understand that.
So you're going to be paying a monthly fee anyway, you might as well just use it for the whole month of September.
Okay.
Whether the Apple Fest is.
And then, and then, so, and then, what about October?
Then October, we would turn them back in, in terms of October, because I don't know of anything that's coming up in October. I, I'm sure there's days in October that the shelter could be used. We could go to November if you'd like, that's, that's why I'm bringing it out on, on the table to be discussed. Do you feel like October's has a body with a better date than September, or like?
I think we should go through at least October.
Okay, then we're looking at November 1st, so if the day in, in October would be nice, people would still use it, but the facility would be there. Okay, we'll go till November 1st.
As soon as we get the place, until the 1st of November.
And I feel like between the money that's been donated so far, we should have enough to cover us till then, at least 1st.
Do they anchor these down, so they can't be pushed over?
I don't know, Luther, I can't answer that.
Okay.
I don't think so.
I would say they would be on some type of a platform, but as far as vandalism is concerned, like anything else.
Yeah, yeah.
There was, there was some discussion about putting locks here. I don't know that that would be a good idea, not.
You have to post somebody up there, you know somebody going to push them over.
Rupke does lock them, and if we lock them and Rupke comes to clean them out, and we're going to be able to agree the problem, so I, the idea of locking them may not be a good idea, for that reason, it's kind of a wait and see thing, we can always go along with it later on.
You can always stem a shot, the damage is just that bad, we just won't be able to handle, I would think. Anyway, there's a motion, and there's a second.
One second, one second.
Yes, Luther?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Carol? Yes.
Are we done, are we done talking about the park?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Have you got, have you got a rundown of how much money was donated, who donated it? You have the whole.
Peggy, I know, Maggie's got what was given to her from.
We have a total, but we don't have.
We just have a total, we didn't get individuals. They, I was just brought the money, I was not told who donated what.
Well, I think that they, that's, that they should be recognized if they donated money.
They should have gave their names.
No, they did give their name. I, Wanda should have that, I just. I, Wanda should have had, I just don't, maybe she's just not been able to get it together. You know, um, you wanna check with her, Ralph?
I do.
Ralph can check with her, or Luther can check with her, and see if there's a list, so that maybe we can publish it, she may have sent it to the communicator. You know?
I know there was a list of donors for the car show.
Yes.
And donated for trophies and such. I'm going to assume, and I'll make you wrong doing this, but the amount of money that was earned from your entry fees, sale of food, anything, accommodation, was what she brought to the village.
No, I don't think so. I think a lot of those people that donated to it were told to make their checks payable to the village.
And the checks that I got were basically from all businesses. So I think outside of you, I think every check that I got was businesses or rent out. And the rest was cash, and I would...
So the rest of it was cash.
And I would, I think it was...
So that would be...
It was six, it was like six hundred and twenty-two dollars in cash, and the rest was checks from businesses.
Don't, I think we should have a rundown precisely everything that went on with car show. Why wouldn't we have it?
Well, that would be of the whoever sponsored the car show.
Whoever did it, we didn't show it.
To bring that, just, the village didn't have anything to do with it.
So we don't have to work, we don't have to, we don't have to tell the people, the village people who donated money. Should that, should everybody know that?
I, I'm saying that I think Wanda may have put it in the communicator.
Is she not, you don't know?
That's why I asked Ralph and Luther to talk to her and see.
I will ask them back.
Okay, no.
Because, yes, I think...
Well, when people give money for things, I think they should be recognized.
Right. And I think she believes that too, I think that it's in there, and we haven't seen it, or she's just not had time to get it all together.
Do you wanna recognize it, which, how, how do you wanna recognize?
Well, um, every time the communicator, like, that's the best I know.
Well, she did contact me to get Colin's address. She, Wanda did speak to me about getting his address, as far as his electronic address, email, whatever, to send things to him, so it may very well be there. She may have already done it, and maybe in this June.
I think, I think they, just like, how many people knew the American Legion gave us two hundred and fifty dollars? Has that been out in the open anyplace? I'll ask people about it, I've asked people about the American Legion, they don't know. They didn't know it. He said, right in here, one month gave it to him, gave it to you. Why don't we know that? Why isn't that coming now? It should all be, uh, not in, rundown of everybody, every people, every community, organizations, it should be on record. Should it not?
Well, they sat in a meeting and did that, then it should've been on the recorded meeting, which goes to a website somewhere, doesn't it, still?
It's on public. YouTube or public.
Thank you. Okay, planning, you don't have anything on planning tonight? DPA, thank you for... It's nice that you're here. Resolution and ordinance? I'm hoping everybody had a chance to look at the, um, solid waste district management plan. We're going to pass a resolution under reading to you. Uh, resolution twenty-eighteen dash ten, a resolution to adopt a solid waste management plan for the Preble County Solid Waste Management District, whereas the village of New Paris in Preble County is located within Preble County Solid Waste Management District, whereas the Preble County Solid Waste Management District Policy Committee prepared an adopted final draft of this solid waste management plan in accordance with Ohio Relics Code sections thirty-seven thirty-four point five-three, thirty-seven thirty-four point five-four, and thirty-seven thirty-four point five-five. And whereas, the Preble County Solid Waste Management District has provided a copy of the adopted final solid waste management plan for ratification to each of the legislative authorities of the district, whereas the village of New Paris must decide whether it approves of said waste, solid waste management plan within ninety days receipt of the final draft. Now therefore be resolved by the council of New Paris and Preble County. Village Council either approves or disapproves the solid waste plan. And I'm gonna stop right there, and then if we, and I will ask for a motion to approve or to deny approval on the plan for the solid waste district. It's a plan that goes until twenty-thirty-two, it's fifteen years, but it's revisited every five years to update it. There were no changes in the amount of land needed, no changes in the amount of money from the fees that are collected there, that go to the plan, to the waste district, solid waste district. Um, and nothing had come up that needed to be radically changed as far as grounds and population and everything. This, this plan talks about how to recycle and how to have goals for recycling waste, where waste goes that we don't collect here, who else can dump here if we have room and they don't. All those things are covered in the plan.
I make a motion to approve it, I read the plan.
Peggy, yes? Luther?
Yes.
Kent? Ralph?
Okay. So, the village hereby approves the district's solid waste management plan. The clerk is hereby directed to send the district a copy of this resolution, be in the mail, attention to the bright assistant district director from County Solid Waste Management District, and the address of Eden. It is found to determine that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the passage of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this council and of any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions, were in meetings owed to the public. It's been approved, and we'll send that in. Thank you very much. Okay, unfinished business? Anything unfinished? New business. Now, talk to me about chickens.
Okay, I I just had different people coming up to me wanting to know why they can't have chickens in town, and because they've got an acre or three acres, or they've got whatever here in town. And, uh, to be honest with you, I couldn't give them an honest answer, because I haven't been able to, uh, read all the ordinances there in town. But I think there is an ordinance that you can't have farm animals here in town. Well, down on South Spring Street, somebody's got a sign out there, farm fresh eggs for sale, and they've got a chicken coop in the back with probably thirty to fifty chickens, okay?
Do you wanna hear about why they have that?
They shouldn't have, I'm sorry.
It's in the township.
That's not part of New Perks, that road?
That road is. I know this, because I live on South Spring Street.
Okay, so their, so their house where it sits at?
Their house is in the village. Their chicken coop is in the township. I would have a chicken coop in the back of my yard, if I didn't think it might come down here to Philly. No, I mean, there's a strip of land down through there, one home on Red Avenue, right behind him, is completely in the township, and it goes all the way down.
Well, I told everybody I couldn't give them an answer, because...
They're not, they're in the township.
Because I didn't think that you were allowed to have them in the corporation.
You're not.
And, uh, and then my other thing is, is the trailer park is a private park, right?
It is.
New Paris supplies the water to that park, correct?
They pay a bill for it, yes.
Okay. And do they, for all the people to live in that park, do they pay New Paris for the water they use?
No, they don't. As far as I'm...
They have, they have one meter. And we supply the park, we supply the park with water.
They are fully directed.
And he, he can go in and charge what he wants to.
Exactly, you see, 'cause my sister lived down there, and she used to complain to me all the time that her water bill would sometimes be a hundred and seventy-five, two hundred dollars a month. She lived by herself, and we know that's not true. I mean, uh, you know? So everybody down there's paying a different water bill, but I wanna know why New Paris, why, why we don't, uh, charge for that water, and why isn't that money going to the village?
We charge him. He pays us, he pays us for all of the usage in the trailer park. He pays us.
Well, I think we're getting ripped off.
No. He pays us for one meter, one...
I understand there's one meter, I understand there's one meter, but we can charge him whenever Christ that the village is charging him, but he can charge anybody in here what he wants.
It's part of their lease agreement.
Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
But that's a private enterprise, and he can charge the people he sends, that are in...
Okay, so why, how can we don't do away with that, and, 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 uh...
Well, you don't have the authority to do anything.
Huh?
You don't have the authority to do anything.
We got the authority to cut his water off.
Okay, 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 calm down.
I'm looking out for the village here. God damn. Hey, you know what, you never cross the street from me, pal.
One person talking at a time, and please just ask for, if you wanna have some stairs, it's an open discussion.
I'm looking to, I'm trying to look out for the, the village here.
The village that gets the money for the water used, he's paid us. He's not, he's not denying his responsibility for the water used that goes through that meter. What he does with that water after it passes that meter to his residents within side the park is entirely up to him and the residents inside the park.
So, if, if, so if he pays the village, let's say a thousand dollars a month for the water, yet he makes five thousand dollars a month off the water, that's okay?
Private enterprise.
We have nothing to, in that, we can't do anything.
I've heard that saying before, Luther.
That's exactly the way the tiny home situation is in my opinion.
I don't know, I just, my concern is...
One meter, it's not our business, what they're...
As long as we get paid for the water and the sewer that goes through that line, we've, we've got our money for what we've served that way.
You know, the only recourse these people have is to move out. I'm sorry to say that.
Take a civil court, I think.
But with no meter there, there's no way for them to prove how much water they use. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
All the trailer parks, they're installed by the, goes through villages, as I understand it, or by the 'cause I think Jill Grassall was telling me that all the, all the parks, all the trailer park pads have meters on them. And they have that for quite a few years. So they know how much water each, each individual trailer is using.
So he knows, but we don't.
Right.
And he's just charging more than we would per thousand gallons, or whatever happens.
I, he charges so much per month, and the more people that move out, if there's a trailer brake here, he still charges the same amount, he just breaks it up between the people he has. He pro-rates it according to the...
According to what, his children?
Yeah, yeah. And that's his business.
That's it, that's it.
And it's the same way for tiny homes too.
Tiny homes is zoned differently.
As well, as far as the waters, it's...
Yeah, but it doesn't matter about the water, yeah.
Tiny, tiny homes is zoned just like the French border, Lake France, it's recreational.
That's a great name, Ralph.
It is, it's recreation, I'll argue that point with you all day long.
It was changed from May two thousand seventeen to July eleven seventeen.
No, it was not. No, it wasn't. That has always been zoned recreational.
No, it's not.
Christine Drive?
The property, the property next to Lake France.
That's Christine Drive.
It's on Christine Drive.
It's one half of it.
But, but the property on that side, where the tiny homes are at, is recreational property, that was never changed.
What?
No, it wasn't.
What do you want, Doug?
No, it wasn't.
I've got this, I've got the parcel code.
I, I've got it too, there's, there's parcels inside the office, and there is, so that is recreational property. It's the same as Lake France. It's just, it was only by different people.
But the commercial part they were talking about was where Duffy's was, is that correct? Just a certain portion that runs right along Washington Street, not that front.
I'm talking about where the tiny homes are installed.
I know where, this is two different things we're talking about.
And let's talk about apple festival.
No, I think, yeah, I think we're talking about two different things.
Duffy's building may be in a commercial zone, but I, but the park where they, where they did the tiny homes, where they developed the tiny homes, was recreational zoning. Now Duffy's building is sitting in a different...
It's a retail, that was retail.
Okay, I'll give you that, but where the, the high five I was talking about, where the individual tiny homes are being built, might as well.
Now that we're talking about the tiny homes, was, if I remember in one of the minutes, it says we have to have a skirt around the tiny home? Is that right?
I think that has to be covered, yes, I believe that's what it was supposed to be, just like, just like...
There's two down there that's not, that doesn't have skirts around them. What's a stip, when is that supposed to be done?
We'll have to look it up.
It should, it should, if it doesn't more occupy. I would have thought.
Well...
I didn't know, I didn't even know the second one was down there yet.
Yes. And they've got shrubs around them, not skirts. And it says in the, in the minute, skirts.
I'll bet you look into this.
No, we just need to look it down.
There's one already occupied. One's been occupied for quite a while, the first one that was put in was. I don't know about the second one, I didn't even know it was there.
It was just put in this weekend.
Okay.
Okay. What else, we got, we took care of the chickens?
Yep, yeah, we're good, we're good there, we're good.
Anybody else have any, uh, new business?
Yeah, the shrubs are screwed on. That's not a skirt.
Um, all right, I have, Jimmy Ragsdale's review is coming up, so...
What do you say about the, what do you say about the shirts?
I'll take a look at this, and have you got it, what on?
Yeah, you got shrubs up against it, makes it look like skirt. That's not a skirt.
No, the thing of it is, is the minutes in a skirt around each tiny home, and they've got shrubs around the two of them that are there right now. Well, but how long do they have to go before?
Since Bill, Ralph said he thought that, uh, before they moved in.
Yeah, 'cause Bill would...
Well, we've got to have it whitey, that's what I'm asking. Don't forget some civilization, we have to know what's going on.
Well, two, two and thirteen?
No, this one's... Okay.
It's in the minute, yes.
That brings you, that brings you... Forty-eight cents to the total sixteen thirty-nine.
He's got one right now, then, ten forty-eight cents. Okay, okay. I have here a review that the street department, street committee has done for Mr. Ragsdale, and he's been rated well. He does a good job, and, uh, I think he did a good job too. Um, signed here by Ralph. The question would be, his rating period is, his, uh, annual time is up on June thirteenth. Our normal procedure is to, for someone who's doing a good job and has no, um, demerits and nothing in their jacket about being in trouble or anything else, is to offer three percent raise, and Ralph says that's forty-eight cents. We'd bring him up to...
Sixteen dollars and thirty-nine cents an hour.
So we will entertain a motion to retain Mr. Ragsdale and raise his hourly rate by three percents.
When, when was the last time he had a raise?
A year ago.
A year ago.
It's been a year. It was three percent then to today.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Mr. Ragsdale's review and increase its value three percent to sixteen dollars and thirty-nine cents an hour.
It's moving secondly.
Peggy? Yes. Luther?
Yes.
Kent? Yes. Ralph?
Yes.
Our public entity pool insurance is up for renewal. It's increased two hundred and thirty-two dollars from last year, and that's a two million dollar aggregate. If we want to increase... If we want to increase it, there are up to three to four and five million. It will cost us $1,475 a year, $3,150 a year, or $4,700 a year respectively. It's been at this for a while, the total premium on the $2 million package, $20,944. That's Public Enemies Pool of Ohio.
Ken, could you repeat those figures again, I'm sorry, what did you say?
We have a $2 million cap aggregate and it's $20,944. That's a $232 increase from last year. We want to go to 3 million, it will cost an additional $1,475, $4,315, and $5 million would cost $4,700 additional.
Annual additional or?
Annual additional.
And right now it's $20,000 per year.
Right now it's $20,000.
So around the $1,400, do you get another million?
For $1,400, you get another million. $1,475.
Who does this available through?
It's available through Public Enemies Pool of Ohio and oddly enough, they are in Kalamazoo, Michigan, but they have an, an office in Blackwood, Ohio. And we have found these meetings to be the least expensive because they are full of, of public entities here. They all do the same thing, cover the same types of things. Is there discussion on the amounts, on anything enrolling coverage? Is your liability coverage basically? No discussion? Is there a motion to either increase or keep the coverage at the same amount for the coming year?
How many motions really are there something about for coming year?
There's a motion to keep the $2 million cap for one more year for the 2018-19 period. It's effective this seventh?
No, it's $232.
It's $232. That was what the increase was over last year. Is there a second to that?
Maggie, yes, Luther?
Yeah.
Kim, yes, Ralph?
Thank you.
Let me know when you raise it because I'm not going to file suit till you raise it. What are you all, get ready quick, man?
Your public officials training, you can do online. Have, we'd be happy to set you up if you need somebody to help you get set up online. You have to take sunshine laws, that training, I mean, did you, did they all get this information? You've all got misinformation and you have to also take the Ohio Ethics Commission training for your ethics. And everybody has to take it once during their term. I think we had to do, yeah, we have to do it. Something might have changed. So I'm just reminding you that the other thing I have here is, we are going through an audit right now. We've been, we, we're about halfway through, I think, and the cost of having this tiny audit, which is a pick and choose thing, it's not a complete audit, we've been billed $2,693.70. We'll be billed that much again for sure.
Of course, we brought $2,000 more.
No, last year it was almost five.
It'll be probably...
We should be about halfway.
We should be about halfway through this, but...
Now next, our next audit period will be a full-blown audit because I think this is the third A U T we've had and I don't think they let you go past three without a full one.
Then they do everything.
And then that one will cost $10,000. Ten plus.
Yes, we will. Okay, so is there a motion to go ahead and pay this audit fee? Like, we have a choice, we don't...
I know we can't here.
I'd take part to repossess our town.
Who knows, someday it's going to be all right, it's just they come and get it.
Maggie, Ms. Luther?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other, is there any other business anybody else have here?
Did I give them those papers?
You did. Everybody got one of those papers. You probably picked them up last time you were in here.
Luther? Here, here's what it looks like.
It's this, unless you're here, let him get it.
I can't, you're not going to be able to see it. Anyway, there's that. Is there anything else from, anyway, okay?
I'm still researching.
I beg your pardon?
I'm still researching.
Okay, fine. Our next meeting is scheduled for July 2nd. Is that going to present a problem to anyone here? I mean, it's not a problem for me, but Kim tells me she's going to be...
July 2nd, I may not be here.
See, that's my point.
Probably going to be in Canada. My wife's leaving for Ireland and I got to take her to Toronto.
Okay, without you, Ralph, you know, I don't, we're, if we're worried about having forums, so if it, if there's a chance that we won't have, we need to reschedule.
No, it's on Wednesday.
The fourth is Wednesday, so, you know, we're...
I have to double check, but I think I'm good.
Is there a, well, we've got Luther and Kim that are going to be here, so if anybody else doesn't show up, we're going to be in trouble. We can move it to 7:30 on the ninth. The board meets on the ninth, but they hit six and they will probably be finished up pretty much by 7:30. Would that be better?
It'd be better for me.
Would that, do you have a suggestion to that?
How about you, Ralph? Can you do that?
Are you sure? Because you won't have a meeting on that second, Monday? You will.
But I'll make it, I'll try to make that one leak.
Okay.
After we get, if we get set up here, I can get that.
Eddie, the ninth, would that be all right with you instead of July 2nd?
Sure.
Okay, then I think we will move our next meeting to July 9th at 7:30. That'll be a little bit later, people, but that'll give the board plenty of time. 7:30 and we'll get Mandy to advertise that for us so that everybody knows we're moving. Any other business?
Yeah, I'll go back.
Um, yes, we're going to readdress something at the park.
Okay, uh, there were some numbers given to me and I, I've been there, I forgot. I have some ideas that maybe we might look at in the future now that we've got the port potty addressed. There is some, some trash cans at $395 apiece. The picnic tables add to the ones that we have, $730 apiece. The handicaps ones are $879, $85 apiece. And any other ideas that council may have to bring to the table in the near future as to how we can improve as we go along. You know, some ideas, seeing how we've got just a little bit of money to, to work with from the donations from the general public that we have.
Well, how much is our balance? What is the park balance?
The balance right now is a little bit over $2,000, if I'm correct.
It's almost three, the twenty.
Almost three now? And once you start drawing out of that with the $118 or the $175, depending on, you know, which way we go on that, that number is going to go down.
Yeah.
You know, over the next, we have four months, but those are some things that we could look at to bring back to the table next month and maybe got some ideas of, you know, the importance of this might think would be next move besides the port light. Maybe use some small outdoor grill of some kind.
Yeah, I kind of think that, I really do, right.
You know, there that, that the shelter.
Okay, folks, that's, yeah, try to think of things that we might want to spend all money on since we've got it and something that maybe we see that we're doing.
Will like to see something...
I think you're right.
For what they've, you know, given us, so the more we do, the more we may get back in return. Just some ideas to put out there and think about.
Well, I have a question. Do you have any idea how many people have used the park facilities since you put the shelters up?
As far as reserved, Mandy could probably tell you, but as far as overall, Ken, I couldn't tell you because it's been open.
There's no charge for the using it, right?
No, we've probably reserved it at least been last year. We've already reserved it two times this year and once, it'll be next week it's reserved. Maybe ten times, ten people reserve that?
I've never seen anybody up there, that's why I wanted to...
Really?
Yeah, I don't go up there every day, but I've never seen anybody there. I go by there quite often since I don't live up in that area, but I, but I've never seen anybody using the shelter and I'm thinking, you know...
I mean, kids use it more than anybody else do right now.
And I know the preschool, I think the preschool goes up there a lot in the summer, they take the kids.
I take my four-H club there at night and we walk the trail and we meet in there, but the last couple of times we've had a meeting, it's either rain or been all.
And I have, there's been several people have had birthday parties up there without kids being reserved. They just aren't there because they're cleaning the trash.
But I think it's getting used to it, I really do.
Well, I mean, at $250 bucks a month for quartetons, you're going to be open eight months out of the year. That's a, that's a quite a, the sum is quite a bit more than the monthly fee that you're talking about, like a dollar a day, well, a dollar a day, that's a quite a bit of money over a period of year. You're looking at how much you're going to spend on quartetons and I'm just wondering, you know, the use you're going to get out of the quartetons.
Hopefully the kids are using more than anybody.
Well, the ones that play basketball.
Hopefully, and you get, get rid of them before Halloween so nobody vandalizes them.
Well, I think if, once we put them there, more people will use them.
More people vandalize them, yeah. I've been to a lot of parks where they don't have any at all.
I know, that's my point being, yeah, there's a lot of parks that don't have them.
So I'm, I'm hoping that this will put an idea that everybody's finding you can use.
I would like to see, I'd like to see a registry put up there, like you used to have a roadside register. You got there, you signed your name and put the date, how many people use it, that'd be an interesting thing to have.
That's an idea.
And all that, at least get, the people who would sign it, need to have some idea who's using it and how often. You guys remember what I'm talking about, the roadside, the roadside park?
I understand it's anybody using it, that's all. Other than the, the car show day, that's on the outside. And how, what was the cost of a shelter? Pardon? What was the cost of a shelter?
Oh, it's about $2,000.
Mine, we have 20, 20, it's $2,000. Two, two, so they're $2,000 a week.
If there's no further business, the chair retains a motion to adjourn the meeting. I surrender. It's moved in secondly. All the day we have adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed?